Councilmember Mosqueta.
Present.
Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Vice Chair Morales. Chair Strauss.
Present.
Or present.
Thank you. We have just one item on today's agenda, Council Bill 120534, a briefing and discussion on the Tree Protections Bill. Uh, we have set aside a series of special and regularly scheduled land use committee meetings to dig into the details of the tree protection ordinance. Today's focus will be on how this bill achieves tree protections and preservation, and what the tree protection standards are. Uh, this is complicated work, and we've set aside today's meeting to really get into the details. Next week, we will focus on the tiers of tree protections, the in lieu fees, and central staff analysis of the bill in total. I've attached the tree protection hearing schedule that outlines the topics we will be covering in in these land use committee meetings. Please note, last week I mentioned we would meet on April 3rd. That is no longer the case. That meeting has been moved to April 7th. It's a Friday, to allow for the Urban Forestry Commission to meet ahead of that meeting. Clerk, if you could, please display the schedule we have created, uh, for the major dates. And then I'll walk through them.
One moment, please, sorry.
As we're waiting, I'm gonna go through some of these dates. Uh, today, we will be taking on, we'll be looking into the tree protections and preservation and the tree protection standards. On April 7th, we will have the tiers, budget allocations, and the central staff analysis. Uh, April 11th are, when amendments are due, uh, there will not be a committee meeting that day. The schedule, uh, requesting amendments to be due so early allows us to take up major policy conversations upfront, um, and allow us to ensure we have the time to address technical and cleanup, cleanup amendments later in the process. As you can see on the screen ahead of you, um, clerk, do you have the other schedule that was attached to the agenda? That's gonna be a little bit easier to read at this moment. Um, I'm gonna just pause and wait so that we have this up. Thank you. There we go. So, as I mentioned, we're meeting today. We'll meet on Friday, April 7th. April 11th amendments are due so that we can have those major policy conversations upfront. Uh, April 21st, we will vote on amendments. April 24th, 4th is the legally required public hearing that provides 30 days' notice in major, in newspapers. Um, just as a reminder, there is public comment available at every single meeting that we have. Um, we will not have any policy discussion on April 24th. On April 26th, uh, we intend to vote the bill out of the Land Use Committee as amended. That allows us to vote on May 2nd at full council. Understanding that this is complicated policy, uh, and that we want to get it right, we have reserved a day on May 4th, uh, for committee time in case we need to spill over. That would put the final passage on May 9th out of full council. Uh, to the viewing public, you can speak during public comment on any of these committee meetings. If you have potential amendments, please let my clerk know. Uh, and you can reach out to me as well. She's tracking these amendments as well. Without further ado, before we begin, if there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. At this time, we'll open the hybrid public comment period for items on today's agenda. Clerk, if you could play the video.
Hello, Seattle. We are the Emerald City, the city of flowers and the city of goodwill. Built on indigenous land, the traditional territory of the Coast Salis peoples. The Seattle City Council welcomes remote public comment and is eager to hear from residents of our city. If you would like to be a speaker and provide a verbal public comment, you may register two hours prior to the meeting via the Seattle City Council website. Here's some information about the public comment proceedings. Speakers are called upon in the order in which they registered on the council's website. Each speaker must call in from the phone number provided when they registered online and use the meeting ID and passcode that was emailed upon confirmation. If you did not receive an email confirmation, please check your spam or junk mail folders. A reminder, the speaker meeting ID is different from the general listen line meeting ID provided on the agenda. Once a speaker's name is called, the speaker's microphone will be unmuted and an automatic prompt will say, "The host would like you to unmute your microphone." That is your cue. That is your turn to speak. At that time, you must press star six. You would then hear a prompt of, "You are unmuted." Be sure your phone is unmuted on your end so that you will be heard. As a speaker, you should begin by stating your name and the item that you are addressing. A chime will sound when 10 seconds are left in your allotted time, as a gentle reminder to wrap up your public comments. At the end of the allotted time, your microphone will be muted, and the next speaker registered will be called. Once speakers have completed providing public comment, please disconnect from the public comment line and join us by following the meeting via Seattle Channel Broadcast or through the listening line option listed on the agenda. The council reserves the right to eliminate public comment if the system is being abused, or if the process impedes the council's ability to conduct its business on behalf of residents of the city. Any offensive language that is disruptive to these proceedings or that is not focused on an appropriate topic as specified in council rules may lead to the speaker being muted by the presiding officer. Our hope is to provide an opportunity for productive discussions that will assist our orderly consideration of issues before the council. The public comment period is now open, and we will begin with the first speaker on the list. Please remember to press star six after you hear the prompt of, "You have been unmuted." Thank you, Seattle.
And thank you. We're gonna go with our in, uh, chamber speakers first. I have David Glogan, Dana Harper, and Steve Rubstello. David, please join us. And we'll have one minute for, uh, comment today. Either microphone, whichever one is more comfortable for you.
Yeah, I am here to tell you, to ask that the tree protection ordinance be amended to emphasize the retention of trees.
Hang on, just a second. Are your mics on? We're gonna restart your time. Okay, sorry.
I am here today to ask that the tree protection ordinance be amended to emphasize the retention of trees. A few years ago, a developer removed 60 trees on a forested lot across from our home in the Haller Lake neighborhood. This included removing a spectacular grove of seven native cedars, whose trunks were all over 40 inches diameter. After the new houses were built, the developer planted new Western red cedars as replacement. These all died as the new owner did not water them. They then planted vine maples as replacements for the replacements. These vine maples were cut down last year, and now there is only grass and shrubs where a forest once grew. The new homes have no shade, nothing to protect from the effects of climate change. Replanting programs are difficult to manage and often don't work. Need to keep our trees and build new housing around them. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Up next, we have Dana Harper, followed by Steve Rubstello.
Tried to be more prepared this time. We'll see. We're a lot of professional activists, so, um, so, uh, first off, this is the most important feature of the current tree code, the Sartre Lee Jacobson book. This book was invaluable in teaching me in my early days of being an arborist and won the history of trees and tree identification. It's gonna be Xed out. Valuable. Builders should know what they're doing, just like we need to know what they're doing. Um, I'll try to read through this in a, in a, within the minute here. So, the 1971 definition of arboriculture is "the cultivation of trees, the art of planting, dressing, and managing trees and shrubs." 1949 definition of arborist, "one who makes trees his study or is versed in the knowledge of trees." It starts with the planting of a tree and watch, and watch for the years how it arches and reaches for the sun and available light, never not in, never not in movement, never in a prepared line.
Dana, unfortunately, that is the time, but if you'd like to meet separately or, um, submit your comments for written, we will also have public comment next week, and as I offered, you can, we can meet separately if you'd like. You're totally fine. Up next is Steve Rubstello.
Real question is, are you going to save trees? Are we gonna have another faint or another, uh, uh, well, Peanuts Best did it with Lucy and the football. We have seen many times the city has talked about actually saving trees. Uh, so far, has not been done, and I think people will be judged on that. I think people do care in Seattle about trees. I think we care about shade. We care about, uh, the environment. We care about a lot of things. I think the other thing that, uh, I haven't heard much speaking about is, uh, the people who were going to be administering this do not have a strong record of administering environmental policy. And I'm not a big fan of the bounty system, but I have a feeling that that might possibly be an appropriate use of it because, quite frankly, the city is not enforcing a whole lot of things right now, and you might make it economically.
Thank you, Steve, uh, benevolent dictator of Green Lake. Always appreciate you. Former, sorry, former. Um, uh, I'm gonna read out all of the names in, uh, virtual public hearings so that you know where you are on the list. We have, uh, 17 people signed up, so we have Steve Zemke, Susan Su, June Bluespruce, Emma Strievy, Sandy Shetler, Dave Mooreing, Lois Martin, Chris Gall, Suzanne Grant, Danushi S. You are not present at this time. Please call into the number provided on the email receipt, not the call, a call-in line. Amanda Dupe, Alicia Ruiz, Richard Ellison, Joshua Morris, Jesse Simpson, Colleen McClear, and Connor McDermott. Connor McDermott, you are also not present. As it stands, uh, up first is Steve Zemke. Good morning, Steve. And I'll note that, uh, Vice Chair Morales has joined the committee. Mr. G, is, uh, Steve Zemke available for us? There we are. I see you there.
Sorry, I was distracted.
Yeah, totally fine. Uh, Steve, I see you there. Star six at your convenience.
Yes. Yes, they've just unmuted me. I'm Steve Zemke, Chair of Friends of Seattle's Urban Forest and Tree Pack. So, how important are trees in our city? How much is a tree worth? Does replacing an 80-year-old Douglas fir or big leaf maple or Western red cedar with a six-foot tall tree represent an equivalency in replacement value? How many years does it take to replace an 80-year-old tree and the benefits it provides? It's 80 years. Trees are important where people live. We urge you, uh, do a replacement value for trees, not one for one, but do two trees for a tree 12 to 24 inches, three trees for 24 to 36 inches, and four trees for 36 inches and above. This requires more equivalency in terms of the value of trees lost. We also ask that you require that in lieu fees be increased, uh, inch per inch, uh, starting at 12 inches rather than 24 inches. This will
Thank you, Steve. Up next is Susan, and please feel free to send in any written comments. Up next is Susan Su, followed by June Bluespruce, and then Emma Strievy. Susan, I see you there. Press star six at your convenience.
Hi, councilmembers. I'm Susan, and I am a climate tech investor here in Seattle. I'm here for an extension of the ordinance to cover all land use zones, including industrial high-rise, et cetera. Now, it's my job to think about the future, both good and bad, and how technology brings us there. So today, as my comment, I'd like to share a tale of two cities. The year is 2050. Councilmembers, many of you will be in your early 80s. In the first city, carbon capture machines dominate a steel and glass skyline. Glasses transparent solar panels generating clean energy on every surface. All the trees have been removed. There are no children playing outside, no birds, of course, and no bees. Without the bees, food scarcity has made us even more polarized than we were in 2023. In the second city, trees older than the city shade the landscape, tying its people to a history much older than them. Eagles soar among the all-electric drone deliveries, bringing zero-waste goods to homes seamlessly covered in integrated spray-on solar. Children continue to play in the shade of large oaks, and teens continue to meet for a secret kiss underneath a century-old cedar.
Thank you, Susan. Feel free to send in any written comments. Uh, June Bluespruce, followed by Emma Strievy, and then Sandy Shetler. June, welcome. Star six at your convenience. There you are.
Hi, thank you so much. Uh, according to the 2021 Tree Canopy Report, neighborhood residential areas contributed almost half of Seattle's canopy cover and averaged 34% canopy coverage. Multifamily areas averaged only 23% canopy coverage. The increased tree protections for neighborhood residential areas in the proposed tree protection ordinance are based on current Seattle zoning, but if the Middle Housing Bill 1110 passes the state legislature, and it looks as if it will, all neighborhood residential areas will be zoned as multifamily. The ordinance would replace the current floor area ratio calculation of 1.4 with 85% guaranteed hardscape in those areas. This will eliminate many, if not most, large trees and groves in Seattle's residential areas. We keep the existing floor area ratio or decrease guaranteed hardscape significantly. Otherwise, we will lose, not gain, tree canopy.
Thank you, June. Up next is Emma Strievy, followed by Sandy Shetler, and then David Mooreing. Emma.
Hello, my name is Emma Strievy. I'm 24 years old and have lived in Seattle my entire life. I'm concerned that the in lieu fees for tree replacement will lead to a loss of our old trees. Tree retention should be emphasized as the first option in the development process within the ordinance. How we talk about our tree matters. Changing exceptional and significant trees to tier one and tier two trees abstract their importance and portray them as replaceable. Restore the exceptional and significant classifications in the tree ordinance. Finally, the 85 maximum lot coverage guarantee for low-rise, mid-rise, commercial, and Seattle mixed zones doesn't leave enough room for trees to grow. Seattle should retain its current lot coverage flexibility for multifamily zones. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Up next is Sandy Shetler, followed by Dave Mooreing, and then Lois Martin. Sandy, welcome.
Hi, yes, um, I, this is Sandy Shetler. Um, please amend this draft to encourage maximizing the retention of existing trees. As we meet today, SDCI is finalizing its approval to clearcut an exceptional grove of native cedars for a dadu and maple leaf. The grove is out of the way on the edge of the site and forms the heart of one of Maple Leaf's largest mother groves. The dadu could be easily attached to the main home on the lot's open space. Why clearcut these cedars, whose loss will launch the entire mother grove on a cycle of decline when the same size and number of new homes could be built with the grove? The answer is that developers are not required to consider ways to retain trees through development. The simple phrase would ask them only to consider alternatives. They can still cut all the trees they need to maximize lot coverage. Please include it in the draft to save the remaining maple leaf mother groves. Thanks.
Thank you, Sandy. Up next is Dave Mooreing, followed by Lois Martin, and then Chris Gall.
Hi, this is David Mooreing. I'm a member of the American Institute of Architects. Uh, you received a letter I dropped off last week that had three proposed amendments. One of the amendments was revising the 85% down to 60%. Here's why. Seattle needs to add 150,000 affordable homes by 2044, and a net add of 85,000 trees or 1,000 acres of coverage by 2037. That's approximately one tree for every two to three affordable homes. Seattle's 2020 Urban Forestry Management Plan has established in Table 1, Page 10, a 20% canopy in multifamily areas, a 33% canopy in other residential areas. Like Portland, Oregon, our ordinances need to predict tree planting and retention rather than today's discussion on predicting tree removal at 85%. Portland's Code 1150-050, Onsite Tree Standards, sets these plans into their ordinance. We can do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. Up next is Lois Martin, followed by Chris Gall, and then Suzanne Graham.
Hi, good, um, good morning, I should say. Uh, my name is Lois Martin. I'm a resident of the Central District and a small business owner. I work in the early learning field. Um, what I would like the council to do is to please review Portland's plan and look at adopting a tree ordinance that's similar. Um, also to ensure there's equitable canopy distribution in historically underserved communities, as well as retaining the current farm calculations in multifamily zones. I'd also like to add that you consider adding protections for neighboring trees. I'm dealing with that situation right now, and Councilmember Strauss, you have said we can reach out to you, so I'd like to take advantage of that instead of the time to kind of talk about the neighboring tree issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Lois. Up next is Chris Gall, followed by Suzanne Graham, and then Danishi S. Chris, welcome. I see you're off mute, Chris. Maybe your phone is muted?
Hi, this is Chris Gall. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good morning, Chris.
Oh, thanks, thanks. Sorry about that. Um, I would like to suggest that you remove the 85% lot coverage guarantee, which could result in an unattractive density. I love it when an architect has placed new buildings on a site to accommodate established trees. There are very clever and creative architects in our midst, and I thank them every time I see their successful efforts in maple leaf. I also noticed that those lots that retain old, large trees soften the impact of density and result in what everyone likes, a walkable neighborhood. Also, please remove the proposed change to tier 1 through 4 naming. The current nomenclature has been around for 20 years and works well. Changing the name doesn't help to adjust the new ordinance. Uh, with proper planning and flexibility, we can save trees and increase housing. I propose that the first step in the process of site development should be a tree inventory and a landscape design. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Up next is Suzanne Graham, followed by Danishi S., and then Amanda Dupe. Suzanne, good morning.
Hello, hello, this is Suzanne Grant. Taking into account the bills that are likely to pass at the state level, all of Seattle will become multifamily zoning, so the guaranteed 85% lot coverage on multifamily lots will not allow any space for trees to grow. We need to determine what the impact is going to be before a decision is made, giving that order. Maintenance over five years needs to be required to keep trees that are planted alive, and a replacement tree requirement needs to be in place for any tree that dies. A new city forester position should be defined. There's currently no oversight about replacement trees that have been planted that have died, a condition which occurs frequently. In lieu fees are going to result in a loss of our big trees. There's not enough room in public areas to replant those trees. And of course, they take too long to grow to help to mitigate the climate crisis that Seattle faces now. Let's make tree retention a priority. And finally, we must continue our time-honored tradition of calling our trees exceptional and significant, which is what they certainly are. It is not acceptable to call them tier 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Thank you, Suzanne. Up next is Danishi S., followed by Amanda Dupe, and then Alicia Ruiz. Danishi, I see you there. Press star six. There you are.
Hi, my name is Danishi. As a professional in architecture and urban planning, I believe this ordinance prioritizes housing production over protecting the city's tree canopy. My request is to maximize the protection for trees with a DBH of 6 inches and above in development sites when trying to achieve the maximum building footprint. So I suggest that any new developments not remove mature trees over 6 inches DBH or encroach into tree-retention areas while trying to achieve the maximum lot coverage. Tree protection orders should not be overridden by planning permission. Because both housing and trees are vital for the city's well-being and sustainability, we must find a balance. Thank you.
Thank you, Danishi. Up next is Amanda Dupe, followed by Alicia Ruiz, and then Richard Ellison. Amanda, please.
My name is Amanda Chavez-Dupay. I am here to follow up on a situation that Sarah Nelson's office, as well as Teresa Muscat's office, is aware of regarding SDIC. Um, essentially, SDIC Director Torgelson issued a frivolous notice of violation clouding our homeowner's title and has failed to take an enforcement step, effectively taking our private property without due process. Yes?
Clerk, if you could, Amanda, is it, are you commenting regarding the tree ordinance today or another topic?
Another topic that's under, um, consideration and purview of, of this committee.
I'm, well, I'm sorry, we, we do have a rule here that it is only comments on items on the agenda. We're, we're free to follow up with you offline, though.
I, I have, um, reviewed the rules, and it says that anything before your committee can be brought up in these comments. I reviewed the rules thoroughly. I have emailed for over six months and reviewed, and I've received no response from Sarah Nelson's office nor Teresa Muscat's office. This involves my due process rights and my home in Seattle, and Director
Thank you, Amanda. We will follow up with you offline, and I see Sarah Nelson nodding her head that she will as well. Uh, up next is Alicia Ruiz, followed by Richard Ellison, and then Joshua Morris. Hi, Alicia. Yep.
Good morning. Yeah, good morning, Chair Strauss and members of the committee. My name is Alicia Ruiz, and I'm here today representing the Master Builders Association of King and Snohomish Counties. I'd like to start by thanking the council for taking up this very important piece of legislation. And I'd also like to acknowledge that thus far, this bill is off to a decent start in trying to balance the need for trees and housing. Um, this bill quadruples the amount of currently regulated trees. That's 70,400 more trees that have some form of protection and replacement requirement. This is a big step in adding to our city's canopy. In order to take an equal big step for housing, home builders need predictability. They need clear and succinct language in the code in order to prevent subjectivity from a reviewer, which can add tens of thousands of dollars and months of wasted time and permitting. With interest rates that have more than doubled, builders cannot take this risk. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alicia. Up next is Richard Ellison, followed by Joshua Morris, and then Jesse Simpson. Good morning, Richard.
Good morning. This is Richard Ellison. Thank you. The existing significant and exceptional trees and smaller trees that are surviving right now in Seattle are the survivors. They're the ones that have survived through the droughts and through all the kind of weather that we've had. As we plant new trees, we find there's a very high mortality in newly planted trees. These have been neglected or for whatever causes. Street trees or on private property, these trees are not surviving. Neighborhoods should have the option to nominate heritage, new heritage trees. There should be an outreach program to help support this. What are the impacts to wildlife as a result of this project? If, if this goes through and we lose this tremendous amount of trees and our canopy, what's the impact to wildlife? The, uh, 30% canopy cover goals apparently are not achievable with this proposal. But it does appear, though, it does appear, though, that the Master Builders Association, DCI, wrote this bill, not the Urban Forest Commission, who should be working in close parts
Thank you, Richard. Up next is Joshua Morris, followed by Jesse Simpson, then Colleen McClear, followed by Connor McDermott, who is the last speaker. Joshua, good morning.
Uh, good morning. I'm Joshua Morris, representing a local bird conservation organization. Thank you for your focused attention on tree protection regulations. Based on findings from our most recent canopy assessment, it's clear that we need to make changes in the way we manage our urban forests. What is not so clear is how the policy changes we make will play out in reality. Trees are important features of multiple complex social, environmental, and technological systems, and changes in the way we regulate them might have unintended consequences that are hard to predict. For this reason, we need stronger monitoring and evaluation requirements incorporated into this bill. Section 9 would only require SDCI to report on payment in lieu of tree replacement and recommend changes to payment amounts. That's important, but won't help us understand if the bill is serving its whole purpose. For one example, the bill intends to facilitate tree protection by allowing flexibility in certain development standards. We should also track and report on the number of permit applicants that take advantage of this flexibility to protect trees. I look forward to working with your offices to improve monitoring and evaluation requirements of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua. Up next is Jesse Simpson, followed by Colleen McClear, and then Connor McDermott. Good morning, Jesse. Thank you, Joshua. Up next is Jesse Simpson, followed by Colleen McClear, and then Connor McDermott. Good morning, Jesse.
Morning. I'm Jesse Simpson, Government Relations and Policy Manager for the Housing Development Consortium. We represent nonprofit affordable housing developers and other organizations working to build the affordable homes Seattle desperately needs. Here today to speak in qualified support of the proposed tree ordinance. I understand a lot of effort went into balancing protecting trees and allowing needed housing production in this ordinance. I appreciate the focus on expanding Seattle's tree canopy by requiring new street trees, greatly restricting discretionary tree removal outside redevelopment. I urge you to make some amendments to expand flexibility for affordable housing providers in this legislation. First, by increasing the allowed reduction in amenity areas, wind-preserving trees from the current ten percent up to fifty percent. Second, by expanding the exemption from needing to provide replacement trees or pay the in-lu fee from the current proposed permanent supportive housing to cover all affordable housing projects. It doesn't make much sense for the Office of Housing to use their support of housing dollars to pay SDIC. Thanks for the opportunity. That's fine.
Thank you, Jesse. Up next is Colleen McClear, followed by Connor McDermott. Good morning, Colleen.
Good morning, council. Um, Colleen McClear here for Lawhurst Community um council and supportive of uh all of the legislation that you guys have worked so hard on. It's coming to fruition. Couple of highlights just real quick. Um, requiring developers to maximize the retention of existing trees six inches or greater, really important. All replacement and in-lu fee should go into the One Seattle Tree Fund, stated in Mayor Harold's executive order. And that fund should be reported on yearly and also able to accept um fines, donation, grants, and land purchases to strengthen that. Also create the Urban Forestry Division uh with additional staff with a separate budget provision that's not funded by developers' fees. So that makes independent decisions a lot better. And SDIC right now only has two arborists that just can't cover all the trees. A couple of other things. Uh, allow the city inspectors to enter a property for any illegal tree activity and also require um at least a street tree for every addu that's put on a lot.
Thank you, Colleen. Up next is Connor McDermott, and that will be our last speaker remotely present or physically present. Connor, welcome.
Hello, uh, my name's Connor McDermott. Um, my comments are mostly just around uh the tree protection and how it's outlined in the code. Um, as I say, the tree protection uh area as currently defined in twenty-five eleven oh six oh A is the ill-defined and open to variable interpretation. Um, currently stands that the basic tree protection area remains as the drip line, but allows the arborist, project arborist, to make changes based on species, age, construction impact, et cetera. While I believe it makes a lot of sense for the project arborist to define the tree protection area, this legislation doesn't show where these standards should come from, and I think it should make the project arborist define these standards based on um accepted industry standards and uh materials such as ISA best management practices, trees development, and the AMZ standards. Uh, this can go, yeah, that's my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Connor. Appreciate your comments today. Seeing as we have no additionals remotely or physically present, we will move on to the next agenda item. Our only agenda item today is a briefing and discussion on Council Bill one two zero five three four, the Tree Protection Ordinance. Clerk, will you please read the short title into the record?
Agenda item one is Council Bill one two zero five three four, Tree Protections Bill for Briefing and Discussion.
Thank you. Uh, reiterate the importance of protecting our trees, uh preserving the canopy, protecting the understory, and regrowing and expanding the canopy citywide. This week's presentation dives directly into tree protections and the tree protection standards. Specifically, we will be talking about the uh tree replacement threshold, protection areas, hardscape requirements, hazardous trees, and mitigation trees. Thank you, uh, in particular to Shonda Emery from SDIC for your hard work to get this bill before us today. Um, Shonda, please take it away. I know you're a familiar face here at this committee from the fact that we had that resolution in twenty nineteen that I helped uh author, uh, that has had you here before committee every quarter. So, Shonda, without further ado, take it away.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmember. Um, today's presentation will first provide a brief overview that summarizes some of the key updates in this legislation. And then next we'll go into the details of tree protections and protection standards. Uh, provided here is a high-level synopsis of the key updates in this legislation, which respond to the most recent data presented to us in the OSC Canopy Coverage Assessment Report, um, as well as the strategies explored in Council Resolution three one nine oh two. Proposed changes include updates prepared to use the tree tier nomenclature for tree categories one through four. Another proposed change is that there are code provisions in this legislation that make use of the hardscape requirement to replace floor area ratio for zone development capacity purposes. And that's in the multifamily commercial zones. And then last is a new requirement that if a hazardous tree is removed, that tree must be replaced starting at a twelve-inch threshold. So this next slide will provide an outline of this presentation.
And Shonda, just before you continue, colleagues, this presentation and the next presentation are absolutely the ones to dig in with all of your questions. Um, so anytime you have a question, just please raise your hand. Take it away, Shonda.
Thank you. So as a quick reminder, um, the proposed changes in this legislation will regulate seventy thousand four hundred trees, which again is a substantial increase in the number of trees protected. The existing regulations regulate approximately seventeen thousand seven hundred trees. So this is a step forward to a climate-just future to support increased canopy citywide. In this presentation, these next few slides will focus on items one through five here, uh, shown on this screen. These will include new tree protection replacement threshold, which starts at the twelve-inch diameter size. And then next, we're going to touch on the tree protection areas, which have been updated in this legislation to include industry standards. And then we're going to have a closer look at the hardscape requirement and how it replaces floor area ratio in those multifamily and commercial zones to better account for site planning considerations driven by allowed housing development. This will include some site planning examples of how this new tool works to accomplish increased tree protections and retentions as more trees are regulated in this legislation. And then following that, we'll touch on hazardous trees and how the proposed changes address them, meaning that in this legislation now, we require replacement when those trees are removed. And then the last item on this presentation is mitigation trees. This piece of legislation makes it clear that replacement trees cannot be removed, and there's new code provisions in that um in this outline to show how that works. Uh, the existing regulations regulate fewer trees, and they have limited tree protections and also have limited to no replacement requirements compared to the legislation, the proposed changes. So under the existing regulations, heritage trees are not regulated. The existing code only regulates exceptional trees, which generally are the tier-two tree categories in this legislation. And then on top of that, the existing regulations do not require replacement, nor is there a payment in lieu uh option when a tree must be replaced. So the existing regulations are very limited, and they don't provide the level of protections needed um to help set up future generation canopy. The proposed changes will require those four tree categories. The first category is for the heritage trees to afford the greatest level of protection. So this means that these trees may not be removed. They must be retained unless deemed hazardous or if an emergency action is necessary. So in those cases, documentation is required. The proposed change is that the tier-one trees must be replaced or a calculated payment in lieu fee must be paid.
Shonda, thank you for that. Um, just, we've, we've heard some comments about the the naming of the tiers. Some folks don't like the tiers at all. Other folks find that um the numbers are confusing. So just, uh, I want the general public to understand, these are the categories of the tiers. The naming may change. Um, this is all part of the iterative policy process. Uh, Shonda, at the end of each of these slides, I'm going to ask you to pause, uh, just so that we have time for questions. I see Councilmember Nelson has a question.
Thank you. So back to the fee in lieu. Um, how much is that? And do you have a rough estimate for, uh, let's say, a cedar? Or, you know, uh, the most common heritage tree?
And Shonda, I'm gonna uh help you out here. Uh, Councilmember Nelson, we're going to go deep into the tier calculations or the in-lu fee calculations at our next meeting.
Okay.
Um, it gets a little complicated, so I just wanted to uh stick on the fact that in-lu fees will be required.
Okay.
Yeah. Just checking, other colleagues, do you have questions about uh tier-one trees formerly understood to be as heritage trees? Um, or, Shonda, if you want to give a general overview of that in-lu calculation?
Um, yes, thank you for that question, Councilmember Nelson. Um, so the tier-one trees would have the highest um greatest payment in lieu fee, um, because the payment in lieu fee increases as the diameter of the tree removed increases. So that would be, um, you know, generally in thousands of dollars, very expensive and very costly.
Thank you.
Just checking, Councilmember Peterson, any questions on tier one?
Nope.
All right. Thanks. Shonda, you can keep going.
Thank you. So, um, the proposed changes in this legislation create the tier-two tree category. So this is a level below the tier-one category in the degree of protections. There are generally, um, these, well, in this category, generally, these are the formerly the exceptional trees. So instead of regulating trees at a thirty-inch diameter in this category, um, as it was in the existing regulations, it now regulates those trees starting at a twenty-four-inch diameter. Um, there are seventy or so tree species that are also regulated as tier-two trees with smaller tree diameters listed in the director's rule. Some of those tree species are small as six inches in this category. Um, and those tree species are also included in this tier-two category. And then in addition to this, tier-two trees now include tree groves in this higher level of protections. And then, um, tree removal may be allowed during development, but these trees, again, may not be removed unless deemed hazardous or if an emergency action is necessary. So in those cases, documentation is required. The proposed change is that tier-two trees must be replaced or the calculated payment in lieu fee must be paid.
And Shonda, I did not prep you for this question, but do you have the list of of trees within that director's rule? You you mentioned some species are down to six inches that fall into this category. If that's information you don't have right now, we should take it up at the next committee.
Um, I think off the top of my head, um, that's a good question. Um, I believe, um, in that table, there's, um, like Madrona is an example, I believe, of a six-inch diameter tree that's protected, and there might be, um, some fruit trees, like maybe pear in that list.
Great. Let's, we'll, we'll just bring that list to the next committee meeting so that, uh, it can, and we should attach it to the agenda as well. Um, colleagues, any questions? Councilmember Peterson, any questions on this?
No, councilmember. I'll raise my NFF question. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Take it away, Shonda.
Thank you. So, um, these trees, um, are not regulated under the existing regulations. So there's no replacement requirements and no payment in lieu for tier-three trees. The proposed changes include new tree categories for tiers three and four. Tier three includes all trees twelve inches or greater and up to twenty-four inches in diameter. And so this adds approximately forty-eight thousand additional trees for protection in this tiered category, where previously there are no protections for these uh significant trees. Significant trees are not regulated in the existing regulations at all. The last category is the fourth category, tier four, for those trees measuring six inches but less than twelve inches in diameter. So except during development, these trees may not be removed. They must be retained unless deemed hazardous or if an emergency action is necessary. And in those cases, documentation is required. The proposed change is that the tier-three trees must be replaced or a calculated payment in lieu fee must be paid.
Thanks. And now I do see Councilmember Peterson's hand up. Take it away.
Thank you, Chair Strauss. A question for, uh, Shonda regarding the tier-four trees, the ones that are six inches to twelve inches. Um, is there a reason why those aren't protected? They're defined, but there's no protection assigned to them, it seems like.
Um, yes, that's a great question, councilmember. Um, this legislation, um, begins mitigation starting at the twelve-inch threshold. And so that includes tiers one, two, and three. And then tier four, um, six to twelve inches are used for tree tracking purposes outside of development to ensure that those trees are retained.
So maybe I'll say it another way, which is, uh, in part of our retention requirements, especially for those first five years after a tree is is established. Um, some of those trees might not hit that six-inch threshold, but we want to begin tracking early, uh, and that's why we created this tier. But I see Councilmember Peterson, you've got your hand up again. Take it away.
Thank you, Chair. So a follow-up to that, so are the um architects and developers required to note on the plans where existing tier-four trees are?
Yes, that's correct. Um, those regulated trees, all regulated trees need to be shown on the site plan. Um, and they also need to be tracked. Uh, we hired a GIS team, um, in twenty-twenty-one, and they are tracking, uh, all trees, uh, tree species, um, whether they're located in an environmentally critical area, a shoreline district, um, the size diameter, common name, scientific name, tree types, whether they're, um, coniferous, evergreen, or deciduous.
So, so just to clarify, but in addition to that tracking, the the architects and developers would be required to note where tier-four trees are before they're removed?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Great questions. Councilmember Nelson?
So in your last presentation on the twenty-second of March, um, page twelve, it says that up to two tier-four trees may be removed in any thirty-six-month period, and it gives zones, and then up to three, tier-three and tier-four trees may be removed uh in any twelve-month period in certain zones. But is, so when you say, um, it's for, I think, was it you that said it's for tracking? Or maybe you did, but it it does seem like the only, when you say regulation, you're basically giving a limit to how many tier-four trees can be cut, uh, by a a builder or property owner within a certain timeframe. There aren't any replacement or, um, uh, well, retention requirements. Is that, am I understanding that correctly? Is that, when you say regulation, is that what you're referring to?
And Shonda, maybe I'll help and, but Shonda, tell me if I got this wrong. Um, which is that what we have found is that there has been a lot of trees removed in uh neighborhood residential zones outside of development, and this is, this is coming from people not liking trees because they either block the light or
I understand.
You know, you know all the reasons why people take them out. And so we have to create a tier to be able to track these to regulate that. Currently, folks can, uh, homeowners can take out three trees per year, and we're reducing that to two every three years. This is the mechanism for tracking that.
So I was just making, um, I wanted to get it in my mind that it's, we're not just tracking them, we're also limiting. And I'm not saying, which I think is a good thing, and, um, this applies to both homeowners that and also developers, so properties being developed and not developed, right?
Shonda, did Councilmember Nelson and I get this right?
Absolutely. You're entirely correct.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Colleagues, any other questions on this slide? Seems like you've educated me and Councilmember Nelson pretty well. If we were able to have this, uh, dialogue up here, this is good.
Great. Um, so another change in this legislation is increased tree protections for tree protection areas. So the image on the right of this screen shows a tree, its canopy, and it's So the image on the right of this screen shows a tree, its canopy and its root zones. The tree protection area may be adjusted to allow limited encroachment or a larger tree protection area with a certified arborist findings. So this means that the certified arborist now has the ability under the new code provisions to make the tree protection area larger or smaller to fit the site conditions. So this is a new change. It gives experts the ability to tailor tree protections using irregular drip lines rather than a static circle um, that are customized again and tailored to the individual tree and the surrounding conditions to better support long-term tree vitality. So this legislation goes together with an updated SDCI tree protection detail. This is a required, uh, tree protection design specification. That'll be part of the drawings and the plans that are required during development and reviewed by staff during projects in the middle. So arborist reports, uh, prepared by registered tree service providers are required to provide, um, SDCI complete inventory of all trees six inches and greater. And so also required is documentation of, like I said, the tree species, scientific and common name, diameter, and location. And then in cases where there's, uh, tree-related activities such as replanting or relocating a tree, a monitoring plan, um, detailing how those trees are being cared for and protected would be required.
Thank you, Shonda. Uh, can you stick on that slide? Uh, thank you, clerk. Uh, colleagues, any questions on this? I, I just want to note that in the past, we've used these static circles around trees and does not account for how a tree actually grows and lives. Uh, I think this is a good change. Not seen any questions from Councilmember Nelson. No hands from my colleagues. We'll move on to the next slide.
So this legislation updates how trees are regulated and how they're protected and how these work together to allow for development to occur. So it gives the ability, uh, to increase citywide tree canopy and increase housing stock at the same time. So being receptive to feedback, it's clear that with these additional tree regulations, we can use a standard that's more predictable and fully communicates with the zoning allows. So the existing zoning capacity remains the same. There's no change to the existing zoning. The hardscape requirement makes it clear what's possible by giving a better indication of what the current zoning allows for more predictable outcomes. So it replaces floor area ratio with the hardscape requirement, which is a standard that accounts for site planning considerations driven by the allowed housing development. Um, so this hardscape requirement makes tree protection easier for both applicants and the arborists. This requirement, again, applies to multifamily and commercial zones. And then it provides incentives with the ability to use code flexibility. So the next slide will explain this a bit further.
Great. Before we move on, I see Councilmember Moskata has a question. Councilmember Moskata.
Thanks, Councilmember Strauss. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I will hold my question maybe for after the next slide. I have a question specific to the permanent supportive housing exemption. So if it's more appropriate for the next slide, I'm happy to wait.
Sure. Let's see if that's taken up. I'll just, uh, real briefly on this slide, note, uh, the city requirements are what creates this hardscape requirement. We are requiring for garbage zones, for walkways, or parking. Um, and oftentimes, these requirements that we as the city have created are what are, are at odds with tree protections. Shonda, can you, can you remind me, what is the current process for exempting our hardscape requirements in order to protect trees? Do builders have to go through departures or what, what's the process there?
Oh, um, right now, um, the, the change in the legislation is to, um, make this
Uh, not what is in the legislation, what is the current practice?
So the current practice, um, is a more lengthy, uh, process, um, where not all of the code required features are shown together with, uh, the buildings and the trees essentially are not shown upfront early in the process. And so there's, um, more ambiguity, um, and confusion. It's not as clear. And so the change again is to make this more clear, um, to reduce, you know.
Shot, uh, Sean, I guess what I'm asking is, let's, let's say, uh, a, a building site has a tree that the builder wants to protect, but they are required with these hardscape requirements to cover the lot, which doesn't allow for the tree to remain. If they wanted to save that tree, what is the process to, uh, either have their walkway exempt or one of the parking spots exempt to protect that tree? Is, is there a process today?
There is a process today. Um, departures are available, um, to be used, but it's, um, later on in the review and not upfront. So three decisions, um, are decided upon later and, um, maybe, uh, an arborist wouldn't see the trees sooner. Um, and so the outcomes are, could be slightly different.
Thank you. So just to clarify, the process is that the builder would have to get a departure. The problem is that the trees are not shown in the site plans until later in the process. I, I flag this for the public and for my colleagues because we have city requirements that are promoting the connect, like the cutting of trees to build the housing that we need. And the, this hardscape requirement allows us to create the flexibility that we need to, to change these hardscape requirements, protect trees and build the housing that we need. Um, Shonda, that wasn't a question. That was more of a statement. In the, what I've asked for here are a number of examples. I asked for this in the last committee for a number of examples of proposed uh, buildings and it with tier one, tier two, uh, and tier three and four trees. We'll be getting into that in just a moment. Shonda, anything else on this slide? Colleagues, anything else on this slide? Great. Let's move on.
Well, this legislation allows for home builder flexibilities to development standards to accommodate tree retention. So this slide just highlights the many of incentives that an applicant can use with code flexibility in the legislation. Um, and I'll show some examples in the next few slides.
And are you gonna go through? So do you want to read these off? And then I've got some questions here.
Sure. Uh, thank you. Um, so, um, with administrative, um, review, the setbacks can be modified, um, by fifty percent. And then the amenity areas can be reduced by ten percent. And then landscaping and screening can be, um, reduced by twenty five percent. And then structure width, uh, depth and facade length can be increased by ten percent. And then in the low-rise zones, um, design review departures, uh, allow reduced parking so that, they can go up ten feet from forty to fifty feet if they're not going into the tree protection area.
Thanks. This is, this is helpful. When you talk about amenity areas, what, what do you mean by this? Is this where the garbage cans go? Are these the walkways? What, what's an amenity area?
Thank you, councilmember. Um, so amenity areas are shared, uh, spaces, green spaces for residents to use. Uh, typically, they include, um, seating, benches, um, like landscaping beds, um, just spaces that can be shared, um, to have a little bit of greenery between buildings.
So in our current code, we could be requiring that a bench be put in and that is at the cost of preserving a tree. Is, is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, for landscaping and screening being reduced by twenty five percent, do I have this right on its face that we could be requiring landscaping at the cost of preserving a tree in the current code?
That's correct.
Okay, that's wild. Just on the record. I think that's wild. Um, structure width, depth and facade length, uh, in increased by ten percent. This means, do I have this, do I have the understanding correct that this means that the building shape can be changed in order to retain the floor area ratio needed and preserve the tree?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then setbacks, just real briefly. It's my understanding that with the current code setbacks are required. So if a tree was in the middle of the property, we could not shift the building into those setbacks to preserve the tree. This would allow that. Is, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you for answering my rhetorical questions. Colleagues, any other questions here? Seeing none. All right, we can go on to the next one. So now we're getting into some of the examples that I've requested. We saw this slide, uh, le- at the last meeting, and we're gonna use a couple different examples. Shonda, maybe if you could show each of the examples here and then we'll come back to this slide.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we, we're, we're controlling the, the, yeah, so, uh, clerk, if you could. So here we have tier one and tier two trees as an example, if you want to move to the next slide. Here we have two tier one trees as an example. Here we have tier two and tier one trees. Um, and, uh, and we'll go back. Um, just so that, for the viewing public and colleagues, so you know what, what the three examples are that we're using today. Shonda, if you want to take it away.
Thank you. So Councilmember Strauss had requested this first example at the last briefing. Uh, this slide is about the hardscape requirement in this legislation. So, um, as a reminder, the existing regulations use floor area ratio to measure zoned, uh, development capacity. Floor area ratio is the ratio of a proposed building's footprint to the lot that the building sits on. So this legislation replaces floor area ratio with the hardscape requirement, which is a standard that accounts for site planning considerations driven by the allowed housing development. So as we're regulating more trees with the legislation, it's crucial that we use the right tool. The image on the screen shows an example of a townhouse development using hardscape, which again is an existing SDCI standard that's proposed to replace FAR floor area ratio. Because floor area ratio relies on the built floor area only and it accounts just for the buildings. So it is a better way to describe what's allowed, uh, housing and what's required, like trash storage, bicycle parking, walkways and driveways. So building footprints, like eaves, parking, parking access areas, walkways, building or bicycle parking, uh, waste storage areas, patios, bio-retention planters and stormwater features, and any other hard surfaces, they're required for typical development projects by current codes. So for this example shown on the screen under the existing code, the allowed floor area ratio is a maximum of one point four. And this project has a one point three nine built, uh, floor area ratio and a hardscape percentage of eighty five percent or five thousand four hundred and fifty six square feet. So the current code required no parking and the applicant provided five parking stalls off the alley. Bicycle parking, solid waste, recycling are also code requirements. And so are the pedestrian walkways and the driveways as well as the landscaping. So you can see that there's a lot of code required features that need to go into the design and placement of the buildings on the site. So the standard allows for increased tree protections. Floor area ratio only accounts for the built floor area, which is not flexible enough to accommodate what the legislation is proposing to do. So this tool makes it clear to the applicant what incentives are available for tree retention and then what is allowed to be removed and then what's not possible or possible with code flexibility. One tier one tree was retained located by that fenced waste storage area on the bottom left side of the image. Tier one trees may not be removed unless deemed hazardous or if an emergency action is necessary. So in this case, this tree was healthy and therefore it may not be removed. And then one tier two tree was removed as it's located in the driveway turnaround, um, near the access to unit six. And then two, two, or two new trees were planted by units one, two, and, and three.
Uh, thank you, Shonda. And so this is an example of replacement on site, but I, I do want to just ask here. Should the builder desire to retain that tier two tree with the exemptions and flexibility that we're providing, is it not possible for them to shift units one and four, two and five to the left? Um, and units three and six up, units eight and ten down, so that there is a space to retain that tree? Are those flexibilities that we've provided in this bill?
Yes, there's flexibilities to shift buildings away from protected trees. Um, the challenge is the driveway here, um, there's certain dimensions for driveways. Um, but they could shift, you know, buildings around, um, and see how that works. It, the tree wouldn't have to be removed if they use different design, um, to do that. So in this example, the builder or the applicant didn't show how buildings were shifted. They just showed the tree was removed.
Well, I, in our current code, we don't give them the flexibility to preserve the tree. So we're in our current code as written, we are forcing their hand to remove this tree. Um, the flexibilities in this bill allow us to give them that flexibility to preserve the tree. Um, colleagues, any questions on this slide? We've got a couple other examples. Not seen any. Well, we go to the next one.
So this image shows two buildings. Both of these are townhouses that we typically see projects to middles for in the multifamily zones. On the front of the lot is a six-unit townhouse development. And in the back of the lot is a four-unit townhouse development. In this example.
Shonda, uh, uh, I don't know that, is, are you speaking to the correct slide here?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Um, in this example, the floor area ratio is a maximum of one point four. And so this project has, uh, one point four built floor area ratio and a hardscape of eighty five percent. Um, so.
Keep going. Sorry.
Um, so in this image, there's, uh, two tier one trees shown in the middle of the property. Um, tier one trees may not be removed unless deemed hazardous or if there are emergency action is necessary. And so in this example, the builder elects to pass on this lot after completing a cost benefit analysis due to locations of the trees and the increased tree protections in the legislation.
And is this because we are not providing enough flexibility to shift these buildings, amended areas, greenscape, et cetera?
It, in this situation, um, the builder saw that these are two tier one trees shown in the middle of the property and they did not, um, show a, a way to move the buildings around. They might have, um, reduced the size of the units or shifted them. Um, they've, could have tried different designs. But, uh, in this case, they, they just passed on the lot.
And is that, and that's due to our hardscape requirement. So what, what I'm hearing is that even the bill before us today does not provide enough flexibility to shift these buildings. And so these trees are preserved, that lot is, is not developed. Is that, is that correct?
This lot was, um, the applicant chose to pass on it. Um, but it, there could be a builder that, or an applicant that uses a different design, um, where they wouldn't pass on this lot. So, um, in this case, they were proposing this design be, and it was challenging because tier one trees have the highest level of protections.
So with the new flexibilities, what is what I'm hearing that we have not provided enough flexibility in this bill to build this housing and preserve the tree?
To build this, yes, to build this particular design, um, in this project's middle for this particular one, um, the tier one trees are located in a location that made it really challenging, um, because they're located in the middle of the property.
Okay, I'm not, I don't feel like my question's been answered, but I'm not gonna ask it again. So we can move on to the next, next slide.
Um, so similar to the previous slide, this image shows two buildings. Both of these are townhouses that we typically see in projects to middles for the multifamily zones. So on the front of the lot is a six-unit townhouse development. And in the back of the lot is a ten units town, ten unit So on the front of the lot is a six-unit townhouse development, and in the back of the lot is a ten-unit townhouse development. So in this example, the allowed floor area ratio is a maximum of one point four. And the project has a built FAR of one point three nine and hardscape percentage of eighty-five percent or five thousand four hundred and fifty-six square feet. So the impervious surfaces accounted for nine hundred and forty-four square feet. The current code required no parking, and then the applicant provided no parking. The current code for, the current code actually provided or required nine bicycle parking spaces plus two short-term stalls. And then also required by current code is the solid waste and recyclables that measure a minimum of a hundred and fifty square feet, fifteen feet wide. Walkways, driveways, landscaping, and screening are also existing code requirements that have minimum dimensions. So in this image, there are two tier two trees and one tier one tree shown in the middle of the lot. The builder worked with the project architect and others on this team to prepare a design layout that shows how units three, six, eight, and ten use code incentives in this legislation to retain the healthy tier one tree. The incentive used by the builder was to shift the units forward and then reduce the landscaping dimension near unit three. And then units eight and ten used other code incentives and flexibilities in the proposed changes that allow for the builder to go up an additional ten feet in height to avoid the tree protection area of that tier one tree. And then the two tier two trees were retained and preserved by the builder. The builder found that there was not a need to use incentives for those trees given their location.
Colleagues, any questions on this? This is simply an example of how we can shift buildings around. So clerk, if you could go back two slides. Here's an example of a tier two tree in the same, in essentially the same place as the other example, where this tier two tree is not saved under our current codes because we're not providing the flexibility that the buildings are needed. If you can shift back to slide thirteen, this is an example of how we are able to allow shifts to occur in these buildings to protect trees. This flexibility does not exist in our current code, and this is part of what is being proposed today. Colleagues, any other questions? Seeing none, let's move on. We've got another example. This is a denser zone, and Shonda, if you want to take it away.
Thank you. So in this image, the project is a mixed-use building with apartments. So the loud floor area ratio is four point two five, and the project has a built floor area ratio of four point two five or eighty-five percent hardscape. So it's located in a mid-rise higher density zone. So it's a building with underground parking, so no parking spaces are shown in this image. For this project, the applicant used code incentives and code flexibility to make design modifications to the amenity area, the landscaping and the screening. So the applicant also retained the tier one tree on the far right corner of the lot. However, the tier two tree was removed next to unit one. So under the proposed changes, tier two trees must be replaced or the calculated payment and lieu fee must be paid. So this was a large, mature tier two tree. The proposed changes required a few thousand dollars in payment for the removal of that tier two tree. So the larger the tree diameter, the larger the payment and lieu fee is. The applicant elected to make the payment and lieu and then plant new trees on site.
And so just to clarify here, the, for the removal of this size of a tier two tree, they are required to both replace and pay? Can you explain how there's new trees required and dollar signs on this image?
So the proposed change allows for a combination of payment and lieu and planting trees on site.
And so this is, the builder elected to do this because the cost of the in-lu fee was so high. Is that a correct understanding for this example?
Yes.
And there's still a tier one tree protected in the corner. Colleagues, any questions on this example? Councilmember Peterson, take it away.
Thank you, Chair Strauss. Could you explain again why there'd be six new trees planted? If they're just, if they're removing just one tier two tree?
So they are allowed to make a combination. And so preference for most would be to plant trees on site rather than make a payment. So they elected to make more trees being planted on site because the payment was very high for, for this, but they did both.
I just thought the replacement requirement was one tree removed, one tree planted?
So that's a great question. Thank you for that. Under the, the proposed changes, it's not a one-for-one replacement requirement anymore. It's one or more trees planted when a tree must be removed.
So I'm going to follow up with council, keep going, Councilmember Peterson. That's how you come off me.
Thank you. It's, it's, so it's, it's, but we're not, but under the proposal, we're not requiring the same width of tree or diameter of tree to be replaced. So if it's a twenty-four inch tree removed, then you're not required to have four six-inch trees to replace, correct? It's just that you are trying to lower your in-lu fee perhaps by planting additional two-inch trees or whatever they might be?
Yeah, that's correct. The goal would be to, or the intent is to extrapolate the tree benefits. So I'm kind of getting into more of the details of how payment and lieu works. But in general, tree replacement must be designed to result in a canopy coverage that is roughly proportional to the canopy cover prior to removal. And so you know, when trees are removed, they must be replaced by one or more trees. The size and species are determined by arborists.
But the canopy coverage you referenced for the replacement trees, that's when they're fully grown. It's not that it'll instantly match the canopy coverage of the tree removed.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson answered my questions as well, or asked my questions. Colleagues, any other questions on this item? Nope, moving on to the next one. I think this is the same example. Can you, Shonda, just explain what flexibilities were elected to preserve this tree?
Thank you. So this slide shows a similar layout of the buildings as shown on the previous slide. The difference here is that there is a tier one tree located in the middle of the amenity area shown in green. So the builder elected to retain the tier one tree by designing around the tree and making modifications to the footprints of units one and two. So in doing so, the builder used code incentives and flexibilities in the proposed changes to this legislation. The design included a reduction of the amenity area by forty-two percent and a reduction in the landscaping and screening by fifteen percent.
Wonderful. And without those flexibilities, this building would likely not be built because those current flexibilities would require the tree to be removed, and the tree is of a diameter that is not allowed to be removed. Is that a correct statement?
Yes.
Okay. Colleagues, any other questions on this slide? Seeing none, let's move on to the next one. I think we're almost through with this presentation, actually.
So this legislation includes proposed changes that specify that replacement trees will help future generation canopy. And so it does this by planting new tree species that are selected for disease and pest resistance tolerance. Tree species selection is also informed by spacing and soil volumes that are site-specific, project by project, per, like I said, arborist recommendations. There's a preference for tree species that grow well and fit appropriately in, you know, an urban environment based on arborist input. Native species are preferred over non-native species. And so that concludes the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. If you want to go on to the next slide, just says questions. We can go back. Colleagues, are there questions on the overall presentation today? I'm just going to check my notes to make sure all my questions were answered. Shonda, one of the questions, if you want to go back, clerk, back a couple slides to where we had that one. What, what is the, do we have incentives in place to require or to incentivize planting trees rather than paying the in-lu fee?
So the code does, well, I'm not, I don't know the answer for sure. I don't have the legislation in front of me, but I believe there is a section in there that encourages and might even state that, you know, planting on-site is preferable. I do know that we did survey peer cities of comparable size and density that do have payment and lieu programs set up, and the majority, I think it was, it was like a one percent usage of payment and lieu. So most, when they're doing a cost benefit analysis, you know, will be planting on-site if there's room to do so.
We'll get into the in-lu fees more at the next meeting. Councilmember Nelson, take it away.
So the tree inventory that was presented last time shows that there were eighty-seven acres of trees lost in neighborhood residential. And so, and that was, and that is where most of our trees are. And I understand that the eighty-five fifteen is applied to multifamily because that's where we already regulate FAR. What are the, so, but there, and the, the number of trees that can be cut on a single-family lot in one property is, is limited, as we said before, by the number of trees per year, et cetera, tier, et cetera. But what are the, if you know, the requirements for setbacks of existing single-family homes on a regular lot? Or did you, were those, were any of those, if they exist, contemplated to change to allow for flexibility of retaining trees?
Yes, thank you for that question, Councilmember. So the legislation doesn't change the underlying zoning. Yeah, but it does allow for flexibilities to reduce setbacks, to, to not go into a tree protection area and to retain trees.
But no regulation to, against cutting them down? No. I'm assuming. Okay.
Can, Councilmember Nelson, can you ask that question again? Because I think you're on to something good here.
I'm just wondering, how do we, how do, that I appreciate how much attention is focused on the, on multifamily, and I'm just wondering, maybe I haven't zeroed in on everything that this does for single family. I'm just wondering what was, what was on the table that maybe was taken off or anything like that? But you and I can talk offline on that one. I'm just worried that, that the trees in single-family zones, wanting to make sure that we're protecting those as well. We'll talk later.
That's good. I think you're, you're on to something good and something we talked about earlier in this presentation, which is reducing the number of trees that a neighborhood residential lot can cut down.
I'm wondering if there is, that's what I'm questioning. I don't know. Yeah, you phrased it much better than I did.
I think we're saying the same thing. That's great. Well, Councilmember Peterson, sorry, I know you don't have your hand up, but do you have any questions on the overall presentation today?
Thank you, no chair.
Okay. Councilmember Mosketa, you had some questions about permanent supportive housing. Did you want to ask them now?
That's okay, Mr. Chair. I think I'll hold off for the next conversations. Appreciate it.
Copy. Vice Chair Morales, any other questions?
I am good. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, colleagues, I do, if you do have more questions either ahead of the next presentation or, and you can stop sharing the slide now, or Shonda, anything else that you want to share about the overall presentation? Yep, I see Councilmember Mosketa with her hand up.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Thanks so much. You know, I, I, I guess maybe I would make an ask for our next presentation if it's possible to fold in more information about the climate resilient trees. We know that the tree report pointed to climate change as being one of the biggest factors in tree canopy loss. Just this morning, we heard how the rings within trees are showing the dramatic impact that the extreme heat and weather that we had two years ago affected trees locally. And this compounds a report that was in the national news last Monday about how within about ten years, we're going to see some dramatic increases in temperatures across the globe. I think it was one point five degrees Celsius increase with just, within the next decade. So I would love to fold in a little bit more about the climate resilient trees if we can, and the next presentation as well.
Wonderful. Yeah, I love it. Let's put that in with the director's rule about the species. And we'll have more conversation about that. Shonda, anything else that you want to add overall on this presentation before we conclude for the day?
I don't have anything to add, Councilmember.
Thanks, okay. Current, you know, I think this presentation really allowed us to see the city requirements and how they are currently at odds with protecting trees and how this bill will help us manage that conflict in a way that preserves and protects trees and allowing the flexibility for builders to build on a parcel while preserving trees, and also giving them the understanding upfront whether or not it's going to be a site that works for them. I'll be bringing a few amendments to the legislation to make it even better because of the public's due diligence. And so thank you for working with my office. We've identified a few areas where the bill can be improved. I would like to explore being able to bring Urban Forestry Commission to the table, possibly along with arborists, so that we can have a more robust conversation at the table. And for the public, there's always more opportunity to send your comments in verbally, and we will have public comment available at every meeting. Without a, I guess that brings us to the good of the order. There's nothing further from my colleagues. This does conclude the Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three meeting, special meeting of the Land Use Committee. The next Land Use Committee meeting is a special meeting on April seventh. It is an afternoon meeting on Friday. My apologies for a Friday afternoon meeting, and we look forward to seeing you there, April seventh at two P M. Thank you for attending. We are adjourned.
Recording stopped.